Okay, it's seven o'clock, time to call this meeting in order. Everyone, please stand for the
Let's lead this to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Coman, if you'd please give us a psych prayer, please.
Dear God, please grant us wisdom and guidance for tonight's meeting. Assist us in making the correct decisions for Nelsonville. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Mr. Coman?
Here.
Mr. Summers?
Here.
Mr. Tangle?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Sherman? Ms. Moss?
Motion to excuse Mr. Sherman from tonight's meeting?
Uh, Mr. Summers? Tangle? Yes. Mr. Raffey?
Yes.
And Simon? Yes. Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? Any comments on said minutes? Motion to approve, motion to adopt. Motion to approve, sorry.
Mr. Tangle?
Yes.
Mr. Raffey?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes. Yes.
All right, citizens' comments, do we have any?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't.
You don't have to, go ahead, you're fine.
I want to welcome you all back, and I hope you all say, we desperately need a council. We got stuck with some big bills from the water plant, and we can't afford to do that with the sewer plant. We can't afford to mess this up, we've got to stay one unit until that plant is online. We can't afford water bills anymore to be raised, every two months or so they get raised. Taylor.
I just sent them.
So, it just, most of us are retired, and we just can't do it. Can't lose that sewer plant, you can't lose the funding, can't lose anything, but we need the council. And I welcome you all back, and I thank you for coming back. I hope we get a new member that'll stick it out.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right. Do we have any business and organizational comments? Okay.
What are you, what are you looking for on your business and organization?
Any, like fundraisers, any, any, kind of, any actual businesses that are...
Yeah, okay, so we bring a business in to talk, or an organization comes in, spends money, that's very serious.
Okay. Any committee discussions, we had a finance committee earlier, if you were, if you would, sorry, give us brief some notes of that.
We discussed two things. One was helping Chief Barber get that cap improvement line up to about thirty-two thousand dollars, because he used the amount on the truck engine, I believe it was. So we have to recoup that again. And then we also discussed Chief Barber's possible raise. And at this time, we are going to wait a couple minutes or a couple days. How do you want me to say that?
Wait till there's a performance evaluation done from our city manager. But we're going to convert the stipend into regular wage at the, bring the legislation forward, change his job description as part of that, so that there's not an IT part of that. And then he'll be able to collect retirement on that stipend, and otherwise he's not. Am I correct?
That's what Tony said.
So.
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay.
And so, does the increase in cap, or does that have to go through an ordinance, move it from one fund?
The ordinance will have to come through to change.
Okay, so you'll have to put the ordinance.
Bob will have to draw up an ordinance with the account number.
Have it what you want, I'll write it with that account number.
Yeah, that was the other thing.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna have to have a Parks and Rec committee meeting here sometime soon, I'll get with everyone and see what numbers for you guys, I'll send out a mail. We have things to discuss, we have the city manager, we have the repair, we've done, discussed. We have, we'll talk about the ball field, make sure everything's going on there, make sure there's nothing that's needed for the summer season. You know, just about everything we do with Parks and Rec. I know that there's, if you guys need something else, concession statement, you can let me know. And our refrigerator, whatever. All right, anyone else?
I'm going to attempt, yet again, for the planning and development committee meeting, we need to talk about a couple of things that previous committee had been looking at, including designated outdoor dining area, and a couple of other possible programs that we can instill to begin moving some of the adults into our city. I mean, you know, like Athens is geared to the college people, Logan is geared to families, those people who are here camping and spending the weekend or whatever. The adults after six o'clock don't have any place to go. And so we've got some ideas that we want to look at that might attract them to Nelsonville, so I will be calling a meeting of planning and development shortly.
Okay, sounds great. Anyone else? Okay. All right, we're moving on to department updates. Chief Oliver?
Yeah.
Role's yours.
So for the month of May, we responded to four hundred and three calls for service, and sixty-one traffic stops, twenty-two of which resulted in citations. We made ten criminal arrests, sixteen warrant arrests, had four vehicle accidents, and trespassed eight different individuals from locations. So we also had an officer resign, Officer Tippy resigned. The other week, I interviewed another candidate. He's currently going through the background check process. It seems like an okay guy, his name's Bryce Chesser, he's currently working at McCarterly. We're having some more issues with our cruisers. One of them had a headlight blowout, and it's getting some bad shaking, probably something wrong with the AR or some kind of suspension issue. Can't really go over sixty with it, so it's not really fit to be driven anymore. We'll get that checked out. With that being said, Tracy and myself were discussing getting a new cruiser with arcopunks prior to her leaving. So I've got a quote for a 2023 Dodge Durango. The cost of that's sixty thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars.
You want to go with the Dodge rather than a Ford?
I would prefer to at least try and, I'm not really
It's okay.
blown away by Fords, like the ACL of my twenty-one, or my twenty-two went out already.
Okay. Okay, all right, you need to get that information to the city manager and let, sit down and hash it out and figure out what the best plan of action is. Sounds great, yeah, we want to use our funds for the proper things. Anything, you got anything else, Chief?
No, I don't think there's any questions for anyone.
Wasn't Officer Tippy going to be the police?
He was.
He was?
Yes.
So who will now, if and whenever we get a dog that can be trained?
Yeah, so over the next couple of months, I'm going to be evaluating the other officers, I got two who are interested. But we're probably going to wait until the next fall class that C P E R offers at Pine Grove Kittles. And we'll see which one of those two is going to be the best suited for it. So it'll probably be
And the hunting's still on for a dog.
Yeah, we'll also be getting a new group of dogs in around that time.
But to be clear, we did not, city didn't lose any money?
No.
Because the dog was, the dog was not tracked, did not follow up the track?
So we ended up, so where we got the one dog, he was able to recoup all the money on that. But we tried to make something work and got a second dog. And because of all the time he put into helping us find this other dog, some vet bills, travel costs and that kind of stuff, we are losing a little bit of money. But we got ten thousand dollars back today, which I delivered to the governor's office.
Nice, okay, good to know. Do we offer some sort of incentive for the K nine unit officer to stay once they're trained?
Currently, for the collective bargaining agreement, it's a three-year deal. They're supposed to sign up for three years. And then the only real incentive is they get an extra eight hours of straight time pay for a day period. So let's say they leave within that year, do they pay back their training costs or anything like that? It's kind of a gray area.
When you have that concreted.
Great, thank you.
I think so, we don't need any more change of rates.
Which that's going to be, so the union is going to be renegotiating at the end of the year? And that's something I'd like to have them kind of flesh out a lot better.
Yeah.
I think it was kind of rushed to get put in last time.
It was.
Thank you.
So, is this position described in an ordinance, or or does it need to be in an ordinance?
Believe it's in our
Staffing.
Staffing.
There's staffing, we approve the staffing. Every year for the, the fire department, the chili, we go through all the departments and approve the staff ordinance. So it's listed in the staffing. Okay, any other questions for Chief Oliver? Okay. All right, we need to amend the agenda to add, to add ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three, any motion, no motion, on second half?
Do you have Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tangle?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three, I need someone to introduce it, please.
I will, thank you.
Second. An ordinance, an ordinance establishing policy and procedure for charging customers a bounce fee for checks or credit card payments that bounce. Or as the city occasionally receives checks and credit card payments that bounce from individuals making payments for city services. Or as the city desires to enforce a thirty-dollar bounce fee for each card or check that bounces and/or where there are insufficient funds to complete payment. Or as the city further desires to require customers who cause rebounce payments to be subject to a twenty-four-month period during which that customer may only pay in cash, after which they may resume paying by a check and/or credit card. Now therefore, be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby authorizes and directs the city auditor to charge a fee of thirty dollars and zero cents to any individual and/or customer who issues a bad check to the city and/or who pays on a credit card with insufficient funds. Any individual and/or customer who causes rebounce payments to be subject to a twenty-four-month period during which that customer they only pay in cash, after which they may resume paying by a check and/or credit card. This ordinance shall be effective at the earliest date provided by law. Only enacted by council on second reading the twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, that's all for the ordinances. City manager's report, role, the role's yours.
I already wanted to ask a question, welcome.
You, we normally have discussion during the second one, but feel free, go ahead.
I just, I wondered, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I just wondered what it costs the city when someone bounces a check.
Great question. So fortunately, People's Bank, who we bank with, will often overlook it or waive it. However, other banks not always so kind. Often, it's thirty dollars, often with credit cards, it can be thirty-five. It was actually, I'm glad you asked a question, because I wanted to give credit to Robert Taylor, if anybody knows Robert. He's been here for going on his thirtieth year. And he asked me some, for some health, researching the code for this fee, because the city's charged this fee for a long time. And we could no longer find in the code where that was in. Somewhere in the last thirty years, it was lost in the code. And so we took it to finance, asking council to reestablish some sort of bounce fee.
I just wondered where that came from, of it costs us thirty dollars, and that's, it's like, we're not that expert.
Right, I'll make you.
So this went through town answer December? And why did it take so long to come in that ordinance for now?
Yeah, I don't have that answer. Mr. Happington?
I believe it was just an issue of transition. It's been asked for multiple times, and it just got lost in the shuffle. I sent a reminder out on it last week, and it was included.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Hi, I have a question, it says pay only in cash, can they use a money order or a cashier check?
Uh, yes.
Okay, it doesn't, it doesn't say that.
Well, if that, yeah.
Right. Once again, city managers report.
Okay, Mr. Roll.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody, this is my first reported entering city manager. So I'll probably rely on a couple of department heads to fill in gaps where I'm missing. But I thought I first would start off with the trailer. And I reached out to the owner, he provided documents indicating, you know, the trailer had been sold, you know, the title has been transferred, and it's going to be moved this week sometime. I think he said it was going to be, he actually moved tomorrow, but, you know, things have changed slightly. So I think that issue is resolved now, so we can put that one to bed. I also wanted to, you know, comment on the SOPS grant that came out last week, kind of on social media, that we had lost that grant. Since that came out, not through public release, but it was put out there. I reached out to Jennifer Seifer, who's managing the overall grant and the sub-awardees. That grant, and it's also gone up to the governor level, just to reassure everybody, it's gotten quite a bit of attention. And I've been reassured by John Carey, who's the director for the governor's office, that that grant has not been pooled, and we're going to work together, governor's office, Jennifer Seifer, myself, to make sure that Nelsonville gets funding for that grant. Whatever it takes. I just want to comment on that, because there was a lot of emotion around that last week. So I've also sat down with D L Z Engineering, and I've gone through and all the, all the projects that the city's currently working on. So I won't spend the time to go through each and every one of the projects, but I am in a much better position to discuss these at a deeper level than I was a week ago. We've, we're in various stages of the project. The wastewater treatment project is eighty percent complete. Anticipated project date is June twenty-third, but that, that timing has been impacted by availability of some meter control parts that have been basically on hold for, for a while, but they're anticipating that's going to arrive April fourteenth, the controllers that actually run the sewer plant. So we also went out to bid for the water system, water systems improvements, phase two. We had two people show up for the bid. Bids were open, that was Friday, at two-thirty. The bids were fairly close to each other, so we feel like we had an accurate number. But D L Z was going to take the bids back, double-check all the numbers, and so we haven't heard back from them yet. The pool is, project's underway, we just got an update this afternoon from the
American League.
American?
American League.
Yeah, and they explained that most of the cracks have been cleaned out. Some of the foam that was put in there previously wasn't really adhered or didn't expand like it was supposed to. So they're really in the final stages of getting that, that complete. I didn't see an actual completion date.
They're waiting on the products.
Yeah, waiting on the product.
Fill in, and then once they get the fill-in, then we'll, we'll do the diamond.
Okay. So some of the, the other projects, there, I can probably talk about one or two of these at some of the upcoming meetings, and then I'll probably pare it this down and put it out, so that, you know, council can review and ask, ask questions. The other thing I wanted to talk about is Neil had mentioned in a previous council meeting, I think it was two meetings ago, that the city didn't really have a mission statement or a vision statement. So I took the liberty to draft a mission and vision statement for the city, but obviously this would be something I'd want to review with council, obviously, get their input, make changes, but kind of just, I've had a lot of experience working with various companies in the past, developing mission and vision, so I thought I would take a stab at it. So I gave everybody a copy of it, and it, the mission statement for the city of Nelsonville, I, I put down that the city of Nelsonville, its council members and the administration of the city of Nelsonville are committed to excellence and bold in the provision of quality municipal services designed to protect the lives and the property of the visitors and citizens. To encourage business to invest, families to live, to promote the natural beauty and tourism activities of the area, to provide, and to provide for responsible and orderly growth. So, and, and I kind of did a little bit of homework and research, looking at other cities that have the natural resources that we have available to us, and how they take advantage of their areas, and it seemed like a combination of mission statements I looked at, I could pencil something together that seemed like it could for Nelsonville as well. And then the vision statement, just how are we going to get there? And I simply wrote, highlight, build on our historic assets. Invest in our community infrastructure. Seek out entrepreneurial businesses, organizations, and institutions. Leverage technology and grant resources to expand our economic base. Provide services for citizens and visitors. Keep the environment and safety of our community employees always in the forefront. So, short and sweet, I mean, other cities have guiding principles, core values, I think that's something that would be worthwhile looking at. And so I would like to propose that council, myself included, it would be open to the public, that we figure out a time and a place to have a retreat to again, review the mission and vision. A city manager, I would like to propose that I could put a strategic plan together that we could talk about, so there's also professionals that we can bring in that can help guide us through this process, because it's always better to have somebody from the outside that can write on a whiteboard and, you know, walk us through the process. And then I think, from what I can see, we need to take a look at our charter. I've read through it, there's things that are outdated, if you want to call it that, they're still referencing, you know, ninety-five, ninety-six. I think the most recent version of the charter I could find was dated two thousand and fifteen, but I don't know if there were really any changes made to it, so I think that would be part of that retreat as well, so there's, you know, plenty of opportunity for us to get together and discuss. The other thing, yeah, that's about all I wanted to talk about, I'm still looking for a pool manager, I've gotten a dozen resumes. Got twenty-four applicants for lifeguards, so I want to try to make a decision fairly quickly, because you know, obviously time's slipping away, and there's probably a fair amount of work that we need to do over at the pool. I've also gone through the resumes that we got in for a deed on our new police chief. So we've got plenty of good applicants there. So I want to get with the form of police committee, which is going to consist of one council member, one outside public member, and then one citizen, and maybe somebody.
Two, two community chiefs, police chiefs.
Right, two community chiefs.
The city manager and an outside member.
Right. So I will give them the resumes that I've kind of pared it down from, you know, the ten or twelve that we looked at, probably four or five candidates, like that I've seen that may be qualified, and then they can review the applications, send them back to me, and order of pick three out of the five or six that I submit. And then I'll bring them in for interviews. We'll open that. That's about it.
All right, any questions for the city manager?
Yes, I have one, what's the status of the code enforcement position?
Oh, great question, and that was actually another I wanted to bring up, and I wasn't sure, you know, we talked about here, but there was mention of the previous council meeting separating those roles. Because right now it's code enforcement slash administrative assistant. And unfortunately, that person resigned the day that I started. So it kind of puts the city manager in a tough situation, because you're losing basically two, two resources with one person. And I think it's going to be difficult to find one, one person to do a great job as a code enforcer, and one person to be an administrative assistant, combining those two roles, I think is not a great idea. And we want to, again, Taylor's going to look, provide the financial backing, but we'd like to split the roles, make them part-time, thirty hours apiece. There's some associated savings with, with that versus a full-time employee. And speaking with another code enforcement person, that could easily be done, a job that could easily be done in thirty hours. Down the road, we feel like, you know, we need to add more hours. Make it a full-time position, then that would be something that we could consider at a later point in time. But I would like to split the role and make them both part-time. Those both in the union positions. Just the, the code enforcement position, the administrative assistant would just be
So you got to go through the union to rewrite that, since the administrative assistant falls under the union right now?
I will have to touch base with the union to indicate what our plans are to pull that aspect of the job out. And obviously reduce it from full-time to part-time.
Okay, any other questions? All right, go to the order, Mr. Coman.
Yeah, I want to start off, it wasn't too popular last time, Iowa Hawkeye women's basketball team came up just a little bit short. But women's collegiate basketball has exploded. It is the biggest thing going right now. Yeah, there you go. And I want to thank And I want to thank the citizens in attendance. It's great to see and hopefully it'll continue to go. All I have.
All right. Mr. Summers?
Well, the, the youth baseball league put on, youth league, baseball and softball league, put on some games in Nelsonville over the weekend. Had twenty-two games played down at Polly Field, which I've been here twenty-seven years and have not seen the fields that crowded. The kids seemed to have fun. We got great feedback from the communities that came to Nelsonville to play. We had Miller, which I'm not too sure if Millers ever came and played on Polly Field before. Not to my knowledge since I've been here. Alexander brought a couple teams, Tremble brought some teams. Am I forgetting? Miller.
Is there somebody from Benton County there?
No. Oh. There was an Athens team. There was a team that plays in the Sandlot that actually came to Nelsonville. So Sandlot brought a team over to Nelsonville to play, which is unheard of, to my knowledge. So the kids all seemed to have fun. The parents seemed to have a good time. And it was great to see that many people come to our community and, and play baseball. It was really something nice. And the lights have gone up today down at the field. I think most of them have. Might have one more day on that. So in the future, hopefully, we'll be hoping, hosting some night softball games down there for the girls, which would be really awesome. That's all I have.
That's good news. Thank you, Mr. Summers. Mr. Tingle?
I just want to say congratulations on your first few days in office. I know you had to hit the ground running, but congratulations on making it this far and keep up the good work.
My go-to order is, is I would just like to say that, you know, I'm sorry for some of the outlandish behavior of myself. I did not quit because of Mr. Row period. I didn't. There was other personal factors involved. There's nothing against him at all. And I'm happy to be back. And I'm happy that the city seems to be moving forward without, without skipping, without listening to me. So thank you, Mr. Row, for the job you're doing. And with that, Mr. Summers?
Well, I would like to say for you, it's very important to everybody, if on TV, set, watches us, the people here. We need to get all the information to everyone. And I know that you've been stacked with private things that you felt that you should handle. But I truly feel that you've got a nice bunch of people here now. And take that load and put it on us. And to my boss, Van, he's not really my boss. I'm volunteering. That, I love this. This is very nice and I think it's, it's appropriate for Nelsonville. And also, Mr. Clemente, I would like to thank you for all of the information that you kind of give to me. That makes, it makes my job easier since I've only been here a couple of minutes. And to the ladies and gentlemen in the audience, thank you so much for being here. I think that the town is on a roll now, but thanks again. I hope
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to make one comment. You don't mind? Go ahead. First of all, I'd like to give Nancy a shout-out. I don't know what I would have done without her volunteering to be answering phone calls because, believe me, the phones are ringing off the hook. And she's been a lifesaver, so it's given me the opportunity to catch up on a lot of other issues that are more pressing. And then I'd also like to thank Joanne, who, at least every time I've shown up, she's been here, you know, offering good advice and she put the, she gave each one of the council members a very nice message. And a thank you. So I think, you know, I'm looking forward as the new interim city manager, you know, working with council and getting a lot accomplished over the years.
Okay, thank you. Motion to go to Executive Order ORC one twenty-one dash twenty-two, chief, personnel and legal matters.
So moved. Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Mr. Tingle?
Yes, and the time is seven thirty-five.